But.
But yeah, it should be. Yeah, we need the microphone HD.
I don't know.
Alright. That's the one. Last number.
What if you. Yeah, but. Someone.
Not me.
Oh, did you? Thoughts.
Good. Forget it. All right, well, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the joint sessions for supervisors and board. Your work. Uh, so there are no other options. It's paid with. Oh, oh.
Mr. Hodges.
President.
Ms. Robinson here. Ms. Bancroft here. Ms. Catlett.
Here. Dr. Wagner. You're the first one.
You're perfect.
So I would like to talk for the joint meeting, the King William County Public Schools and the King William County Board of Supervisors for order. And Dr. Wagner, would you please call the roles to support me?
Mr. Farmer here. Mr. Watsonburg here. Mrs. Dacken here. Mrs. Catlett. And Lucy Fraser.
Here.
And here, all present, you have your phone.
Thank you.
With that for the board, uh, we will do review and adopt the meeting agenda. Is there any question? Comments to the agenda? I will accept a motion.
I imagine we, uh, adopt the agenda. Second.
All right, all of there.
Hi.
Your vote. I want to have before we start for a quick question. Wherever. So, yeah.
That's not good. Maybe sure. Okay, so, um. Mr. Chair, um, King William County Public Schools usually start our meetings with a pledge allegiance and a one of the thousand. Would you please join us if you have to go with them on one of the thousand?
We have one room.
Everybody be standing.
I believe this to the United States of America, and the people who want to stand. For God, his visible with every achievement.
Over the thousands. Thank you. So. So that's after the meeting. We have agenda item number three, which is our FY twenty six budget consideration, then people like to call Dr. Wagner and Mr. Longest to come forward and, um, do that presentation for us.
Have a show. How tall would you like me to be, many guests, say heater? Good evening, Chair Fraser, Chair Catlett, and our four vice chairs, Ms. Catlett and Ms. Robinson, ladies and gentlemen of both boards, and guests here this evening or whom may be viewing from home. On behalf of our school board, we are pleased to join you this evening to present to you a culmination of many months. The school board FY twenty six proposed budget for your review and consideration. We appreciate the opportunity to meet together tonight to share some of our needs and priorities, and how we intend to fulfill these needs as we expect our community and school division to grow in the years to come. Ultimately, my goal is for King William County School to be known across Virginia as one of the premier communities to live, to work, and to learn. I'll begin this evening with a brief review of our new strategic plan as all of our budget priorities are aligned to at least one of the five strategic goals. Next, Mrs. Longest will provide a very brief summary of some of the initial budget development process and input considerations that we received from principals and directors that's reflected in the first part of the slide presentation, which is the operating budget, and then she'll review remaining priorities that comprise of the school board's ultimate request for FY twenty six. And then finally, we'll review the remaining funds that comprise the school division's total budget request. Please feel free to ask questions along the way. We have principals and directors in attendance tonight who are more than happy to provide details if you have a question. And then lastly, if time permits, we would be interested in, um, touching on a discussion about some expected community growth in our county over the next few years and what some potential short and long range implications might be for the school division, school division rather, uh, if time permits. Um, but we're very proud of the work that we've done. I'm grateful to the school board for its support, uh, in the budget presentation you have this evening, and we also appreciate the opportunity to present. Okay? And do, do I advance or?
I got you.
Thank you. And you, I believe you have a copy of this, uh, in front of you as well. Mr. Wolf, we can, we can go ahead to the next slide, and this is just the summary of, uh, approved total FY twenty six budget that the school board is proposing for your consideration. Give me total amount here, but Mrs. Longest summarized all of that. You know, is the presentation. Okay? You know. Is that how you want me to promptly just to say? Next slide?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. So just to reiterate, we shared this with the board of supervisors last year as well, but we do have, um, a newly adopted mission and vision that, that the school division, the school board has approved, and, um, you know, I'm not gonna spend the time to read this to you, but we want to make sure that the public has access to this as well. Um, but we are looking forward to an opportunity to grow our school division, uh, not just in size or a number of students, but also in our outfit. Next slide. Thanks. We do have five strategic goals. Goal one is most aligned with classroom instruction to engage all students in relevant, authentic learning experiences that prepare them to graduate career, college, and life ready. And we have some examples of, um, objectives under each of these goals that you can see, uh, might further specify how we intend to do that work. And again, I'm not gonna read all of these, uh, to you, but you're welcome to stop and, and ask questions along the way. Next slide. Goal two is related mostly to personnel. Uh, goal two is we value and invest in attracting, developing, and retaining high quality people who personify the division's core. And again, some example, uh, performance or achievement objectives we have for strategic goal two. Goal three is to support and strengthen the physical and mental health of all students in that. Objectives there that further specify that goal, and just so that the board of supervisors knows, we are in the process, uh, this year of updating our school board on progress made through each of these, uh, three, or each of these strategic goals, and we have completed strategic goal three, and we intend to update the school board on strategic goal four at our April. So you can advance? Thank you. Goal four is to cultivate strong connections among schools, families, and the community to broaden opportunities for student learning, development, and growth. And we appreciate the opportunity again to be here this evening because we believe that, um, as the, as the two boards who represent the citizens of this community, that this is the first step in fulfilling a strategic goal four. So thank you again. And goal five is to pursue effective, efficient, and equitable uses of division resources, operations, and processes to support our mission, vision, core values, and strategic goals. And I want to assure you that any of our priorities, as I shared a moment ago, are aligned to the strategic plan, but we do pride ourselves in being, uh, efficient, balancing efficiency and effectiveness, and making sure that, um, that we, that we target all of our resource allocation to those initiatives and activities that are gonna yield the greatest success outcome. Any questions on the strategic plan? Okay, so with that, Mrs. Longest is gonna, she and I are gonna take us through some of the school division's initial requests, and again, you're welcome to ask questions along the way, but she'll summarize this as we get to the paper.
As you can see, the next, um, nine, five, nine through twenty five are how we go about, um, our, our budget process. So our budget process really starts, um, pretty much soon as we get the, the one budget in, we're already working on calendar for the next year. And then we start with having, um, leadership team meetings and starting to develop what, what our needs are for the year. And then we reach out to the schools and ask for their needs and, um, wants, and those come in from the school levels, and then the directors provide budgets, and that happens in October, November. That process then gets, they present those presentations to the leadership team in December. We wait for the state budget numbers that come out late December, early January, and then we start that budget process of kind of scaling down from what the needs are for the division down to what we think is a reasonable path, um, to you all. And so that's kind of how that process works. And then, as you know, what we're doing right now is coming to you all for, um, for funding, and then, um, we'll wait for you all, then we'll, um, to make a decision, then we'll go through the appropriations, build budgets, and then we start all over again, right? So full spring's budget is here. This is their ask. But when you see things asked out in twenty seven and twenty eight, for the majority of the time, those are things that, um, our leadership team have pushed or are born in, um, the approval process has pushed out. So you'll see here, these are the full springs app. I'm not gonna go in detail. I don't wanna keep you here all night. I just want you to see like where we start to where we finish. And then a Quentin, you'll see that we have a Quentin, um, has many, um, things in the twenty sixth column and some training opportunities. Next. Hamilton Homes, um, that first one is a position that we're currently funding through a grant, and we were able to fund that for one more year through that grant, and then that will be a request in twenty seven. And that is one of those items where we get the funding from the state for a few years, and then it becomes a responsibility of us to maintain that because we need that position for literacy acts or different, um, initiatives that come down the pipe. And so you'll see many of those requests have been pushed. Some of these requests were pushed from last year and then pushed again in this year. Then the high school, well, I think Hamilton has some more with, um, some supplies, and, um, we'll talk a little bit more about the middle school, um, athletic expansion later on, but you'll see that there. Um, King Y M High School has, um, some instructional needs and then some personnel needs. Um, many of those are initiatives that, um, you know, we have started having, um, R and D and some security at football games, as we've had some, um, other districts that have had concerns, and so we wanna be prepared and be ready and keep our community safe. And so, um, that comes at a price in which we're paying, um, top dollar for not only our, our staff from the sheriff's office, but also R and D to help with that process. Next, please. The high school also had some PD needs and some additional, um, sports ads. Um, at this time that we can talk a little bit about now, um, field hockey was a, um, an activity that we brought on as kind of an intramural sport this year, and it's really taken off with the turf project that you all, um, helped us with using, um, um, bond funding, but that we are still working on that quickly. If, if we may make all the deadlines, it will be in the summer before our football season starts. That will allow field hockey to also play in the same season time period as football and other needs. And then indoor track isn't, is a new first sport that has been, uh, many of our peers, um, King and Queen and West Point and different school divisions are looking into indoor track or have already implemented indoor track. And so this would give us the opportunity to bring indoor track as another option for our winners. Additional instructional needs, so this is, um, teaching staff, and this is instruction as a high level, um, coming from either the division level for things that work, that we know that we are in need of, um, to meet with the, um, Virginia Literacy Act and some of the other initiatives that are coming down the pipe. So these are positions, um, PD needs, and some software needs. Next, sorry. Special programs, so, um, special programs, um, many of the sped teacher needs and, um, peer professional needs, those are really IEP driven to meet the IMP IEP compliance, and so we'll see some of those, and that's based on the needs within the district. So if more students move into the district that need those qualifications, we have to provide those services. So we have to ensure that we have the funding to be able to provide the needs for the sped teachers, the peer professionals that work with the sped teachers, and then also speech OT and PT needs that are based in the IEP and are required based on the IEP compliance. Um, some safety, PD safety for our, um, school safety officer, um, and some additional supplies. School safety and student wellness, um, we're seeing, this is not just the King Y M thing, we're seeing this across the board. Um, school security officers this year, um, last year we applied for a grant for four, four school security officers. We did not win the grant. Uh, we have reapplied, um, and I got some follow up questions that I am working on that I hope to get, um, resubmitted tonight or tomorrow, and, um, related to trying to reapply to get that school security grant. Um, but currently we have a school security officer at our middle school and high school, and so this was to add a school security officer to both of our full spring and equipment schools, and then also to add another additional one at the middle school and high school. We are moving forward with weapons detection at our middle school and high school. Those devices have been bought with some security grants. And so this security, school security officers would be able to assist in that where the FRO cannot. So we would have that need at those schools, and we're looking to add, um, metal detection at both the elementary and the primary school in this coming year, if funding allowed. Uh, the other thing on this slide is the behavioral support specialist. Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right. Our. Including benefits.
Yes.
Right, okay.
Yep, yep, yep. So that makes sense. Um, so most of the position, when you see a ninety five, ninety eighty, the salaries, they need where between forty and fifty, and then because we're VRS, we have VRS, we have health, health insurance, and then we have, um, health insurance credit, group life, and then the FICO tax that we have to take out, so.
You're looking at your price. You're gonna come out of your time.
Pretty sure we, um, can get you something. We'll find it, don't worry.
But I can look at it too. This is a fact, a good thing to have. Present this to your teachers, it's a benefit package, so you can say, you know, your benefit package is worth learning about that.
And it's very interesting when, um, we sit down with different individuals, and if, you know, Red was here, I could, we could, um, give you, you know, we have some examples where when people sit down and say, well, I get this over here, or I could get this over here. When you sit down and look at, well, how do you compare the health insurance? How do you compare? There's so many pieces and parts that you think of it as it's just that dollar, but if your health insurance goes from four hundred to nine hundred, and you're only getting a two hundred dollar rate, you're really not getting more money, you know? But it's, so it's definitely interesting when you sit down with someone and show them what that package is. Um, and I think she does that a lot with the recruiting and trying to explain, like, our, um, VRS rate for teachers for VRS is fourteen point two one. So we have to pay fourteen point two one percent of their salary. If they're hybrid, they can elect to do another four percent, and we have to match up to two point five. So when a hybrid employee, I have to budget that fourteen point two one plus the two point five, because at this point, that's what the retirement, to be able to have a decent retirement at total retirement, you need to be putting that additional money away. So, and everyone looks at VRS differently because and they fluctuate every few years, so I've seen it as high as sixteen point two one, we're down to fourteen point two one. Um, but then they added that four to two point five percent match, so that factors in there. But, you know, some of the counties at times are eight percent or nine percent. So we have to pay a higher rate into VRS because the teacher pool is so underfunded, and that's across the board. And so that's evaluated every two years, and so we are in the second year of the four, no, the first year is fourteen point two months. So we know for this fiscal year, it'll be the same. Then the next year, we'll have to wait, wait to see what those rates are. Um, and then the other thing I'd like to just note is on here, behavioral support specialist. Um, originally, we had one ask for each school, and this is someone, so to give an example, if you have a class of twenty-four kids and you have one or two kids that are very disruptive, that whole class is being disrupted on a, on a every time, right? But if we had a behavioral support specialist, they could pull a child out, work with them, bring them back in, sit with them, try to work with them. This, this is a process in which you're not disrupting the whole class, the class can continue to learn, and that behavioral support specialist can work with that kid one-on-one, whether in the classroom or outside of the classroom. But that could really give us the benefit of keeping the kids in the school, but keeping them in the learning setting, but then also not disrupting the others. Originally, there was an app for one per school. We know that's a big app. So our final consideration that we'll talk about in a few minutes is one for elementary and one for secondary to start. And then as we would work through it, we would determine if we were to need more or what different capacity we would even need in the future. And then there was a safety communication coordinator position. Our board has asked for us to defer that for one year. And so that's one here as an app, but that has been deferred when we get everyone's slide twenty. Next slide, please. Information technology. So we are one-to-one at at the schools. And so we, the IT department is managing not only two thousand fifty devices or two thousand forty devices for students, but they're also managing the devices for all of the teachers, admin, et cetera. So we're currently closer to probably twenty-five hundred devices that they are managing. So this was a request to add either part-time or full-time. That price was more of a full-time price, but that was, has been deferred. And then Adobe, we did ask for a digital license for some use of high school, but we're able to budget neutral that with some savings that we found in other areas. The next slide, please. Operations and maintenance. So as I'm sure all of you are aware, and you've probably heard across the board in your budget presentations, we aren't seeing prices of supplies or anything going down at all, right? We all said during COVID, hopefully these prices will come back down, but they never came down, right? So we, we are trying to, we do need some additional needs from custodial supply and purchase services and repair, or water and utility rates and things like that. There's also a night custodian supervisor. This is someone that could do little projects at night or can cover down with custodians that are out. And then a part-time custodian was moved out, and then some PD for our current staff to get up to date on some refrigeration items. HVAC items. Next, please. Transportation. So the big one here is fuel cost. I think we're pretty good, top one one. That our fuel cost is okay. The fuel cost added here was to add for the additional work and the middle school work to ensure that we have enough to budget for those buses that will be traveling. And then the main things are down at the bottom, the bus driver. So based on our growth that we're seeing, we're needing, we're projecting that we're going to need another bus route every year for the next couple of years if the growth continues. So right now, like example, if we, you know, might have been able to go into two or three neighborhoods with one bus a couple of years ago, we're taking almost one bus into each neighborhood. And so we're having the need that we will need to add another bus. We still have some bus routes that we have a couple of fed routes that are close to a two-hour round trip. And then we have some other routes like down the county that are an hour to an hour and a half. So we do have some longs. So maybe with an additional bus, we can kind of offset some of that and try to make some of those commute better. And so you'll see that one for this year, but also one for the next year. Bus and car aid, we are seeing, going back to behavioral things, we're still seeing a lot of additional discipline type issues in some of the buses. And so this would give us the flexibility to hire and be that could be moved. And this is a couple aids. So this is actually free aids, they're part-time employees that get paid the daily rate. So if you have an issue on, say, bus nineteen, Freddie could put them on bus nineteen for a couple of days and then move them over to this bus for a couple of days and kind of fluctuate them around. And then car, we are currently running eleven cars out of county. And so those eleven cars are taking kids to placement outside of the county. And so some of those cars require an aid based on severity of the children. And so that has an aid that can fluctuate between the different cars as needed. Next slide. The division wide. These are some of just the division wide things that we had considered as we were going through three percent budget, budget or three percent salary raise. As you're aware, last year, the governor passed three percent this year. And so this is the second year of that three percent. So if, so we are hoping for that three percent to be passed on. Many of our peers are doing a lot more than three percent. But we are cognizant that budgets are tight, and we know that at this point that the three percent will keep us moving in the right direction, and we will continue to watch that as we move. Next slide, please.
Most of your behavioral is just from middle?
From what?
Middle school.
I'm not an expert, but I would say it's probably across the board. Mention of our behavior, is it middle school? I would say
Absolutely. So bad in elementary, you love that we actually did have something less than our budget for like an in-school suspension for elementary school kids so that we did not have to suspend them. Yeah.
So I would say if I'm kind of looking at the basis, it's across the board. It's just different levels and different severities, right? But we're seeing it across the board. And so back in two thousand nineteen, right before I came to King William, we had moved all of our paraprofessionals to what we consider a contracted source. So we moved all of our paraprofessionals to an outside source. And then this is something that gets brought up all the time, and we talk about it constantly. It would, it would be beneficial for us from a standpoint of continuity, of stopping, continuation of learning opportunity and just the, I guess, sheer impact across the board to bring those bring those employees back, the King William employees. It's hard to keep the people in the paraprofessional role because the benefits are not really there compared to county or school employees. They are only paid for days worked, and we pay a markup, but the markup is not as much as if we added a benefit. So if we were to do some type of tiered approach to bring those paraprofessionals back in to benefit the school division, this was an approach of bringing the adaptive paras back in. So a paraprofessional works alongside with the teacher and helps the teacher within the classroom to meet the needs of each of the students. So adaptive classroom, those are the kids that are pretty much contained in one classroom all day. They may go to a couple of resources and different things like that, but they're with their same peers all day in a room. Federal education would be the ones that would work with students, but they would come in and out of classrooms depending on disease and their responsibilities. The board sub, we have one board sub at each currently. Those board subs, when a teacher calls out and we can't find a substitute, that board sub is the first one that goes into a classroom and covers. So you know, if we have a teacher out having a baby and we don't have a long-term sub that's you know, planned for that board sub could be in there for up to six weeks or eight weeks, depending on that. And then the general education substitutes, these are the the paraprofessionals that are general education. We have general ed in some of our kindergarten classes now. We also have some that are helping in other capacities that in ISS capacity and different things like that at the different schools. So this is our tiered approach to try to bring that in how when we originally talked about this a few years ago, it was just such a big bite. But if we do it as a tiered approach, it is something that's more manageable to bring in from a budget standpoint. Next slide, please. Human resources. We are finding that we are getting teachers younger and younger, meaning they're coming straight out of school, and they may not have all those degrees or all the classes that they need to get their full provisional license, their full teaching license. They come in as a provisional or what we call a parent teacher, and then we offer them tuition reimbursement for some of those classes with a two-year completion process, meaning if they were to leave the division within two years, they have to pay a portion of that money back. So we're not completely losing that money if they stay for a year and then last they pay the money back after one year, they pay all of it, less than one year, they pay all of it back after two, after two years, they pay a portion of it back and things like that. And this is twelve thousand five hundred to be able to add additional tuition money. We're having more parent teachers that we're really kind of work with, and then some supply money. As you can imagine, we're all fighting for the same teacher. So recruitment fair and the different events that we have to go to to recruit those teachers do cost money, and from time to time, they continue to go up because there's less and less people going into the teaching field. And so we're, we're competing for that. Next slide, please. Compensation and benefits. So the average of the three percent to maximize the state funding would be the six hundred eighty-one thousand six thirty-two twenty-four. The scale adjustment work, so last year, we did scale adjustment work through our teacher scale and our bus driver scale. This year, the scale work would go to operations, classified and professional skills. And so that's really custodial staff, our maintenance staff, our classified, or like our secretaries and some of those. We found that those scales are well below our peers and well below the average. And that scale works about a hundred and sixty thousand. And then we are receiving state funding of three hundred seventy-one. So the additional funding needed for that would be four seventy. If we were to say we want to do a four percent raise or a three percent raise, each one percent would cost the division about two hundred and twenty-seven thousand two ten seventy-five. Next slide, please. So in summary, this is what our original ask from all of our schools was. So our asking FY twenty-six was sitting at four point two million. We deferred two point one of that to twenty-seven and deferred three hundred and twenty-six of that to FY twenty-eight. Now, if we go to set twenty-six, this is the most important slide, and I'm going to talk about, and this is twenty-six, yeah. And this is the remaining priorities that make up the ask for us. So as you can see, school security officers, we are asking for funding for two of those. This would be if we wanted to receive the grant. So I didn't budget the grant because the chances of us receiving it are probably pretty slim. Just based on our local composite index and different factors. But so if we were to get the grant, we obviously wouldn't need that money. But if this would be that we would need, we would like to hire one for Cool Springs and Aquinton or just do across the board at the hundred and seventy-five thousand seven thirty-two. King William High School fed paraprofessional, that's a thirty thousand dollar paraprofessional coming in as ESS employee. AES adaptive program. So our adaptive, our IEP compliance needs moving from Cool Springs to Aquinton and the ones currently at Aquinton are over capacity and what we could use one classroom. So we need to add that second classroom to meet that IEP compliance. And so that would be an adapted teacher, and then that adaptive program would also need a paraprofessional. And so you'll see those, this is next to one. A fourth grade teacher based on enrollment growth. Our third grade class was sitting at capacity. And so if we were to grow in that, any, when they move to fourth grade, we would be over the capacity of what we like to have in the class size. The K two teacher enrollment growth, we are seeing our numbers grow during the school year for sure in that K two area. So this would currently that, if you, Ms. Wilkens, if you had to say if you had a teacher right now from Hamilton, where would you put them?
Yeah.
Yes. So I would say, and I agree with that. And the reason I say that is our first grade is currently one teacher higher.
Yeah, there, we have eight sections.
We have eight sections. In second grade, we only have seven sections. So we're going to need that number when it moves up. And then that doesn't really factor in any more growth. That's really just that, that class moving up. K eight reading support personnel. So this is an item where we want more reading support. And it's one of those things, whether we go down the route of a reading specialist or a paraprofessional, but we need more reading support to help with the Virginia Literacy Act and some testing scores and different things. And so having that would be great. The cosmetology teachers, we currently outsource our cosmetology program, and we can service ten kids' needs at an off-site location. And this would be to bring cosmetology in-house to King William school where we could service possibly up to sixty kids. When a study was done, or did kind of a survey, the need was about a hundred or so for cosmetology?
Hundred and eleven students expressed interest in cosmetology.
So a hundred and eleven students express interest, but we could probably meet the need of sixty students if we were to bring that program in-house. And that would have them being career-ready in that category. STEM teacher, so Cool Springs, this was a board app to add a STEM teacher at the Cool Springs level. And so this would add a resource to the rotation for Cool Springs. The next app is an Allpoint?
Allpoint, yeah. I'm going to see what you want to.
Sure. So I started working with Allpoint in November, October, Tom Green, and we, Ms. Dr. Bassett worked with the ITRTs and provided a list of what we would want if we wanted to do a pop-up STEM lab. And so we pitched that idea to Allpoint's broadband, and they provided us right at eight thousand dollars for the funding. And that those robots have been purchased and had this at our last board meeting. And I believe I was told that they were set up at Cool Springs the other day. If anyone wants to talk about, we can coordinate that and let them come see that. But to, with that being said, this would be an opportunity where that would be a resource that would be added. It's coding, it's robotics, it's lots of different avenues. The ITRTs are constantly looking at new things to add to the program. And we have been working with a permanent Indian tribe on our donation to help maybe offset some of those recent asks. And so as, as I feel like people are well aware, because I bring the budget amendment to you all, we're always out there looking for more donations and more things to offset some of this. But the STEM teacher at Cool Springs, there is a STEM teacher at Aquinton. So currently, those kids, when they get to third grade, get that opportunity. But that doesn't give pre-case your second grade any opportunity on the STEM. And I don't know if you know of any little pets, but my seven-year-old is better at my own phone than my self, and I felt that was pretty stabbing. So could you imagine if we started the kids into robotics at that age, the advantages that they would have? Instrumental music teacher at Hamilton Homes and Aquinton. So this would kind of be a split type opportunity. So right now, our chorus teacher and our music and our band teacher teach one morning at one at Hamilton Homes, and then they switch in the afternoon and switch to the other school. So their chorus, then the high school, they go and do band back. So one teacher is, it covers both schools. As the band program has been growing, we were hoping to have the opportunity to be able to hire one another program so we can build our music program. But that middle school music teacher could also help and work with Aquinton to try to get kids in the middle school music-oriented with instrumental music before they get to middle school and they decide they want to be, you know, music, a band person in sixth grade, they would have, they would have that opportunity to kind of experience it before it gets there. And so that's a twenty-six app. The chorus teacher for Hamilton Homes, so that it's not split, is a twenty-seven app. And then the one that Ms. Catlett was referring to, the elementary alternative classroom, that's a teacher and paraprofessional. We did push that out to FY twenty-seven. We're hoping that the behavioral specialists that we have built into our budget will help with that need until we can get additional funding to help fund the elementary alternative classroom for next year. And then the initial phase of the ESS, so that's the adaptive paraprofessional, bringing those in, and then middle school sports expansion. Um bringing those in and then middle school sports expansion. So this isn't, um what we would try to do in the first year is do intramural sports. And so that would be something where it would just be getting us, you know, it wouldn't be competitive, we wouldn't be traveling all over the state, we would just be doing a few competitions in a few different sports areas, not trying to compete with our Little Leagues and Parks and Rec and different things like that. Looking for opportunities to bridge that gap between those programs and the high school. Um and then maybe adding some of those sports that are successful in the first year into an actual kind of middle school sport in FY twenty-seven. So I'm going to pause right there um and ask what questions you have.
The figure that you have for the two security officers, doesn't that be a hundred ninety-five? Or ninety-five a piece?
So um I think we were trying to just nail down and make it as um specific as possible. And so I think I, when I got here, we were trying to build it off of what we currently have so that we can kind of be in line. So the ninety-five is like when they throw out, they want something, we're, we're putting it on our scale and kind of getting an idea. And then this number was more specific because we had budgeted a hundred fifty last year and for two. And once we got them, because they had G O C experience and some other things, we ended up having to pay them a little more. So we just trued up the number on this. Yes, sir, good catch. Any other question? Okay, next slide please. All right, so all the talking I've done is just one fund. So this is Fund Two-O-Five, so this is our operating fund, which is our largest. And so you'll see here that the additional superintendent needs is that one point one two eight. Before I move on to our other funds, do we have any more questions? One fund through it. The other one should go a lot easier. All right, two oh six, so Fund Two-Six is our textbook fund and this is restricted. So we have very few purposes in which we can use these funds for. That we talked about in our preliminary meeting when we talked about budget. Many of the times textbook funds, so you'll see up here, the first one is how much we are expecting to get next year. And these are all of our revenue numbers in this entire presentation. We're based on the governor's budget that was put out in January. We have our revised um budget right now, which is pretty similar, it's not exact. Um but we won't know what the governor is going to veto or or keep in or veto until the end of the month. So you know, these are very, these are preliminary, but they're better than they just making them up, right? So our textbook revenues, so they're saying that we need to get about two hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars in. So keep in mind, um we bought um Virginia Literacy Act materials, which was just one subject. And off the bat, it was two hundred and ninety thousand dollars. So if we were to truly do like a mass implementation across all levels, which is, I believe, our next big implementation, we could be talking seven hundred fifty thousand. I mean, we really do have to have funding in this fund to be able to fund that stuff. So you'll see on our expense line, we have different, um so the things that textbook funds can be used for is instructional supplies, textbooks, and then software related to and to um the instructional material. So those are the three items that we can use these funds for during the year.
There is proposed legislation in the General Assembly this year that would require all school divisions to purchase what they call H Q I M, high-quality instruction material for reading, math, science, and social studies for all grade levels. And, and what determines whether or not instructional material for H Q I M is, is they go through a vetting process by the Department of Education. And so they're currently going through that process with math. But if, if that legislation were passed and there's an expectation that school division follow that legislation and have to purchase instructional materials from a V D O E list for science and social studies in addition to that, I don't know if that will all happen in one year, the legislation will probably spell that out. But that's another reason why it's, you know, it's important that these funds remain restricted for that.
Yeah, listening to you there, it's un, unbudgeted demanding.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
So easy to do this from there.
Very true. All right, any questions on that according maybe to two oh seven? Okay, so Fund Two-O-Sen and vertical nutrition. And so um we're currently, um this is pretty much in line with what you all approved last year. We do not fund um any of that and um we do not ask the county for any funding related to and she funds herself and she funds herself based on selling a meal, her federal reimbursement and um any kind of catering items that she does um with different events or also um like Parks and Rec gets meals through her during the summer. And she, she has that um meal program with the date that she gets reimbursed for that. And Parks and Rec doesn't pay that for the meals at this point. So this is a revenue of one point two and then her expenses are pretty much um salaries for her staff to run her four kitchens along with her food supply budget. Any questions on that? We did have, we have had a surplus during the pandemic, we did, we were able to get more federal reimbursements when we had um across-the-board free meals. But as you are well aware, and I came and asked for a, a use of fund balance last year and more than likely will be asking for one before my departure, this, she is definitely spending down her um fund balance on just honestly food needs. Like the food expenses are still rather large. They were the reimbursement rate. All right. And yeah, no, eggs or anything else. All right, um capital plan, so this is Fund Three-Tithe Team. And so this is where we, if we have carryover from one year, the resolution on nineteen twenty-eight, I believe, references that the money goes into um our Fund One-Nami and then once it in One-Nami becomes due, ask for probation and move that funding out to be able to fund capital project needs. So here you'll see at the top, the hundred eighty thousand is a technology grant that we get each year. We use that money to buy the one-to-one Chromebooks. Um and so you'll see that funding there, the security equipment grant, so that's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We apply for that grant every year, there's a twenty percent map. Usually we don't receive two hundred and fifty thousand, this year we received like sixty-seven thousand, the year before it's eighty-four thousand. But we continue to apply for that grant every year. And that grant, um this year is helping to offset some of the um metal detections, the next year's application, let's do in August, will also be metal detection along with cameras and different things to keep our building safe and secure. Um transfer from school reserve, we are asking for two point nine million from our school reserve account to help fund the additional needs below. And then the proceeds from matrons of debt, that one point one is the um money for the turf project that you all have already approved. Um that is just in here as a reminder because that turf project won't be done before June thirty, um and will still be making some payments into next fiscal year if we will need it appropriated. If this was, um we are in desperate need of some instructional furniture and equipment. One, our classrooms are growing, um we are going back to more individual desks versus tables um in classrooms, one because we're putting more kids in the class, but also to have individual work environment. Replacement of buses, that is something, um many years ago, I came, we had twenty-plus buses um that were over twenty years old. And we have continuously added a few to our fleet, keep in mind, like I come every time and ask for recreational buses. There's a twelve or fourteen monthly time on those buses. And so with that being said, we are, we are projecting that we will add a few buses each year into that stair. There's also a cool bus purchase, which is a separate line, that is to purchase an actual activity bus. That activity bus is a little different than a regular school bus. It has um storage underneath that bus, so it would be easier for athletics to be able to use that bus to transport. What we're finding right now is based on our fleet and the number we have to put on the road day in and day out. We're having to maneuver what school divisions we go play at and what times we play because of the distance and keeping the buses for the instructional needs, getting the kids home and different things like that. So if we truly had one bus that was kind of dedicated to that, those kids could leave and um Tony's working on dedicated bus drivers related to that. So we have had a lot of coaches that stepped up and said, I'll learn how to drive a bus and be um trained through the process so that we can leave at two-thirty when we need to and we don't have to wait till four o'clock. We also have found that as our county is growing, we um, the normal county schools that we played day in and day out maybe not want to play us anymore because we're very competitive and so we're having to travel a lot further. For football, um multiple of our trips this year were two and three hour trips each way to be able to play opponents um with football. So the, that, those buses will be nice, a bus like that would be nice to be able to store the stuff under, not have to roll it through and, and run it over the teeth in the bus. And then could be a dedicated bus that could leave on at a given time. Um building improvements, so that one million ninety-four thousand is made up of a lot of different things. Um and behind the presentation tonight, there's detail lists of that. But then also there's um a listing in the back of your notebook that has the description of each item and what those needs are. So that one million ninety-four thousand is um building improvements, so that bathroom renovations. Um I know many of you came to the school, think I can see them, Ms. Devonport is shaking her head yes. Um along with um some gym renovations, so um the wireless P A system um at Hamilton Homes. And um bleacher re- replacement, the bleachers are original to that building and so um replacement of windows and things like that, but all of that detail is in there if you want to see anything or have any questions. Um repairs and grounds, maintenance and grounds, so that's um to keep our so we finally have built all of our parking lots and got all of our parking lots up to where they need to be. So now it's just maintaining them, so filling the cracks, um getting them resealed and things like that. So that's an ongoing expense, but it's nowhere near the three hundred or four hundred thousand dollars we were biting off at a time to keep, to get our um parking lots back to where they needed to be. Security equipment, so this is um broken out um in different areas. So this is some of the infrastructure and upgrades that are needed. This is two hundred fifty of that is the cameras, the um weapons detection and different things like that. Along with um some instructional computers. Site improvements and refurbishment, so that one point six there is that um field. So the turf field project is moving forward under what was originally asked um budget-wise. And so not only are we getting the turf field at the high school, but they are going to do um much additional work to moving the dirt down to the middle school. We, in the original proposal, when we first talked to the first company we were negotiating with, they were going to bring the dirt down and then we were going to work through the rest of that. We found a company, a contracted company that will do exactly what we need at the high school along with more of the maintenance of getting the field at Hamilton Homes playable. So grass grown and things like that. So that's that one point six there. And then, and Tony's giving an update at the next board meeting of where we are in that turf projects, we're almost deal of thunder. Um and then um the last is those instructional hardware, so that's the um the purchase of Chromebooks that offset the hundred eighty up top. Um and then things like that. So any other questions that we have on this?
I do want to point out, um here she talked to you all about the improvements at Hamilton Homes and the gym with the sound system and the bleachers, um so our fault as a board is that that school has the largest gym. Um so if we were to upgrade the sound system and stuff like that, we would be able to host any school performances there. Um there's plenty of parking around the school and has been insurance exit in bathrooms and the rest will be protected. Um but not just that, but it's large enough to have more people in it, there is a bigger stage. Um so that kind of will help some of our auditorium needs at the moment. Um but I don't know if any of you have been to any events at Cool Springs or Aquinton or anything like that. There is no room for parent and grandparent there, all chairs are always used, people are sitting and laying on the floors. People are lined up out the doors or on the backs and the sides, um so it's definitely be able to allow them in and sit comfortably and be able to hear.
And having that um dirt or whatever, top of the nation's would move from the high school down to the other feeling. That is going to be a godsend for the students that are doing exercises out there for field days and everything else that we have done and put sports that our community use would play out on that that field, because if you've ever walked that, that field, it has more creeks and crooks and hills and valleys in it than enough. So this will have us another really, really nice site for um people to be able to have a reach on.
All right, if you want to give a head, I think this is just, I summarize all of this, did they have it? Well, they can come back with any questions they have and we can talk in detail about that. All right, insurance fund, so this fund is funded six. Um a few years ago, we were what called self-funded and so our self-funded health insurance did not become, um it became more than we could handle. And so we are now with T L C, which is the local choice, which has been um a really good decision for the school division. Um one, we did not, we did not have to raise any of our rates when we went to T L C. Um but so um we have not been able, we have not had to raise our rates for the past couple of years. And I'm excited to say we've negotiated our um in- insurance rates for next year and we have no increase to staffing. Um so no staff will receive an increase in the county, um school's budget will not see an increase. But Fund Six Sixty has to have a two-year runout life. And so at this point, this fund has to sit restricted until we finish the two-year runout. And so next year, this fund can help offset insurance premiums um moving forward, but as of right now, this one cannot be touched under that two-year anthem agreement. And we are receiving minimal interest, about thirty thousand a year in that fund. Um and then pretty much that, all that fund is sitting in claims expense as a possible budget because it could come in, that there are still claims that come in. I had no idea that claims took that long sometimes. All right, Fund Seven-O-Five, so this is our impact program. So from my standpoint in finance, this is the Middle Peninsula Academic Center. We do their, we're their fiscal agent. So I oversee the payroll side, my team oversees the payroll and the A P side and we ensure that um their employees, Angloster and um King William are paid and that. Um they are funded pretty much all from the state, so one million fifty-six thousand thirty-four dollars is coming from the state and then they have a V P S A grant that we um initiate and then I S A. So the one point one million there pretty much goes to salaries, full-time and part-time. And then some expenses for instructional needs, um equipment supplies and um different items there. Any questions on impact? All right, Fund Seven Ten, this is the Middle Peninsula Regional Adult and Career Education Program. This is Fund Seven Ten and we do the same capacity for them. We are, if both of these are also housed in our building, so if both of these are also housed in our building. So we're housing our building. Um Dr. Ragnar and then functional team do assist from the impact standpoint. M P R pretty much runs more on just reporting to the superintendent of the different divisions. And um but we and finance oversee their um grants. So we um are approving grants for them. We oversee their payroll and we oversee um all of their bills. So because of that, we have to have that money appropriated through you all. Um they are, they are pretty much grant funded and payments from other counties. So we um bill out for them to the other counties that participate. And then we oversee the grant funds. And so their overall budget is four hundred and nine thousand five hundred. They are using about fifty thousand of their fund balance this year to offset their budget to try to do some new initiatives and new programs. All right, all right. And then the last slide, um slide forty-five is just the comparison of school board approved of five twenty-six budget from year to year. The main thing I just want to let you all notice here is in twenty-four and twenty-five are, oh, one more, sorry. Yep. In twenty-four and twenty-five, our budget was less because we had the six point five million in bond fund. So many of the projects we did in capital in that year were run through the bond project. Um we didn't put the bond project because we don't oversee that fund that is handled by Dave Wilson and his team here at the county. But that bond fund is the difference that really fluctuated in those years. Um if you put that six million in there between twenty-three and twenty-five, we would pretty much be constant across. What questions do you have for us tonight? Or what additional information would you like us to provide?
A lot of information and it's very helpful. So let's take good y'all. Sorry, I will have questions. I can just approach a little bit more, but um I think I have a phone viewer.
Late major. Yeah. So and I will tell you, um honestly, um based on the amount of divisions that I've been talking to that are applying for King William doesn't need a lot of the credit. And so I hate to say it, but there are chances of bearing. Because what when that is to the grants through D P J S, they ensure that they try to fund all S R O grants first. Because you know, we're very fortunate here at King William to have an S R O at every school division, at every school, but not all counties have that yet. And so that you last year, the money never went past the S R O. So it usually funds S R O, then it goes to the S S O, then it goes to what's considered um school security specialist. So last year we applied for the S S O and the school security specialist. This year, they're not even taking applications for the school security specialist because they know there won't be enough funding. So from my standpoint to you to just be brutally honest, the chances of us getting that grant are probably very slim. But I would feel guilty if I didn't try to apply every year because who knows, maybe everyone can't get their application in, but in week.
On the cosmetology, um you know, there's a hundred thousand dollars capital premium to renovate a classroom of the cosmetology. I mean, do we have, can we afford to let go of a classroom? Would it be cheaper to like to bring the lady who currently does her cosmetology? I've met, I think is ready in the building there uh maybe or whatever. Um like, I don't know what the charge is to that, but I would think it's pretty self-sufficient in order to house teaching. Is that just not feasible since we're not going to use her because she's retiring or what?
Um so just so we're having to commute the kids there and back. So we have the travel time. And then she can only house about ten at a time. And so to bring it in-house and the hundred thousand, honestly, Tony not sat down and had a thought through like the build the room that they would like to renovate, we think the electrical is good. But like to get things in there for plumbing, we were gonna have to pull up the floor. We're gonna have to dig through the walls. There's a lot. So we're looking at a lot of different options. I Julie Mills has been looking at maybe like a trailer that we could easily hook up things to, like we could have a nice looking trailer. I mean, they have really nice trailers. That could be like an outdoor classroom that so we're still exploring all the options there. We think that if we got the cosmetology teacher, we could get started with a program and make it successful without having to do all those renovations right away. But we would have to work towards them for the whole experience, right? Because they work with mannequins, they work with tool box, but then they they really need the wash station, the hairdress station, like all the different stations. So the hundred thousand is our estimate that we looked at different items that we would need to buy. But it may not be that we need all that hundred thousand in one year. I maybe or finance may be coming back next year and saying, of the hundred thousand, we only spent fifty this year. We need the other fifty appropriated for the next to to meet the need. We do not have it at bridging.
And we actually are already capped out at bridging um with the current opportunity that our kids have. I think it's thirty per come in some cases, but there was like um
Total's forty-five.
Forty-five, but they don't offer cosmetology in New Kent.
Yeah, we are. We definitely have kids that have a lot more interest in things like that. Um but unfortunately, they don't have the opportunity.
For our contractor profession, it looks like to do the step program transitions.
Yeah. So um our current E S S employee is budgeted at thirty thousand. But um if we were to bring them on with benefits, it would go up to about forty-eight thousand. Yes. But what what we're seeing with our E S S peer professional was coming in, we're training them, we're getting them acclimated to the student setting and they're falling in love with the kids. But then all of a sudden, here's an opportunity to be a secretary at this other job, making a couple of dollars more an hour. And then we lose. And so then we start over and it's like the revolving door. And so I understand the reason that the board did that that um back in two thousand nineteen. Um but the contract vendor, we don't have the the best relationship in keeping people in those roles because originally it was the, you know, parent that didn't, that wanted something to do during the day where our kids were at school. And so it just worked out. But now many households, both parents are working full-time job to make ends meet. And so so we don't have the same clientele that is that is constantly applying for this position. Um yeah. The rest of the they have some considerations um but it's
What are currently used now for shredding?
We're currently um it's so this year we moved it to finance. I have one staff that's doing the Library of Virginia paperwork. Then each school is responsible for shredding their own. It's very labor intensive. It's it's not undoable, but it's one of those things like if we could kind of have a company that did it, it would be nice. But it's one of those things, if you told me that I had to pick that or something else, I'm gonna pick you up.
So are you saying like for this contract, they would go to each school and get their shredding document?
But we still have to follow the Library of Virginia paperwork process. So we would still have to do it. But instead of our staff shredding, you know, um we would have it put in a secure box and they would come um remove it just here. And we would probably still do it like once a year. So that's a summer project right now. So the bookkeepers, after we get done with the audit for the current year, they go into their their files and look five years back, pull those files down, bring them out, do the paperwork and and then box those boxes are done. From time to time, we've had staff that's been available, um you know, based on different needs. And so we've asked them to do it. But so right now, we're managing. When I first got there, we um we had a contract in place. We rolled all these carts out full of boxes ready to go. And they said, we can only take this many boxes. And we were like, what if we can't do with all these? So it's um it's definitely a big time commitment.
Will there be a limit on what they will take under this contract?
Yeah. And I estimated based on the number of boxes I see that are coming through finance on the Library of Virginia to determine what that cost for. But it could possibly, right?
Can you create a for capital plan going out? Um with within each fiscal year, is there like a rating of critical, necessary, but not like like I've been in the bathroom and um obviously the cosmetology renovation is obviously something that you've ever helped or needed, but not like is there a way to
Yeah. So our Yeah. So our board had asked us to ensure that we got cosmetology on the list this year. So to be able to have them, a teacher in there, we would have to do the renovation. So what we do is the capital plan, so we start in that October, November, getting the capital needs across the district. So every department gets capital needs. We put it all together and our list ends up, it was like eight pages long of capital needs. And we we dove it down to this. And so we kind of then sit down with the leadership team and say, what's critical, what's most important? Some of the projects we have to get appropriated this year, like if if it was approved, we would ask for appropriation. It may not get done this summer based on by the time we get appropriated, July one we start. So sometimes it's wrapping up in June. Sometimes we're gonna come back and say, hey, the appropriation you gave us for capital last year, actually, I need three hundred and fifty of that moved to this year because we weren't able to get all the projects done. And so it's kind of one of, it's kind of a moving target, but I always mind ensure that we come to you, it's appropriation before we commit any of our our funding out to ensure we're meeting the requirements that you all asked and are
I got a question. This might be, Tony, might be dangerous one. The bus radio, are are they tied in with the sheriff's radio system? Have you talked to the sheriff about his plan of upgrading his radios to an encrypted system that's to the tune of eight hundred thousand dollars? Okay. So your radio budget of of upgrades are not going to be affected by it, is it?
And we're budgeting to replace. So um in the past few years, we've done a lot of things. And so we're really trying to look at that and say, what if we replaced five a year so that we don't have these big years? You know, the year that we did all the H VAC, you know, when all that H VAC comes up again, that's gonna be a heck of a year. You know, to kind of consider. And so we're trying to think through some of that, those needs and say, let's do five a year for the next five years and space some of that out some.
Oh, this for water heater for forty-six thousand sixty-three for this year twenty-five at at Clinton. Um how does that work? How do we get a forty-six thousand dollar water heater that was the
Yeah. Wow. The expense is
We get that inspected every year.
Did we have anybody donate playground equipment? That would be kind of
We have in the past few years replaced both of our playgrounds. And so um both of our playgrounds are um within the past three years. The and then um the preschool, we brought preschool back on during the pandemic. And so we did have to add some preschool pieces just because our current playground at Cool Springs started age five. So we added a few of those past year too. But playgrounds are actually used not only during the school day with our kids. Summer sneakers uses them after school uses them, but there's not a weekend I don't come by work and there's people out there playing on the playground or playing on the field or so just because there's not bathrooms out there doesn't mean that they're not playing on them constantly. And I think that was one of the selling points a few years ago is yes, there's one at the ballpark, but there's two right here in the central part of the county too.
And there's specific regulations on that.
Yes. Yeah. Based on the height of the playground equals the number of inches of mulch you have to have. The the higher your playground goes, the more mulch you have to have. And so Tony and his team regulate that and ensure that we get the right amount of mulch because we don't want to, you know, have to put down on the ground. No one likes it in the playground. But those are things like, I mean, those playgrounds will last quite a few years. I mean, they're gonna be around for a while now.
Um and then driver's education, we actually are now down one person on that. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Um so do we anticipate?
So currently we have one car that is now two to three years old. The driver's education program requires our car to be within a few years. And so if we were to get another car, one, we have, we're hoping that we have teachers that are working towards that certification. So we had two, we're down to one teacher. I believe we have at least one working on it. Okay. So then that would put us back at two drivers and teachers. And so there's many times that both of them want to run kids. And we get a backlog, so it'd be nice to have two. But then that other car that's been on the road for a couple of years can only be on the road a couple more years. And then that's gonna have to go back into our fleet as a day car. And so we've kind of planned it as a transitional life. In a few more years, we'll ask for another one and kind of work it that way.
Do you have to turn some away and you go private?
Um we, I think we have some that go private based on the timeline. Um but I think that we don't turn them away. They just would go to the end of the list based on when they sign up. So they may be able to drive long before they get an opportunity.
And I don't think the cost is that much different between what a county charges and what some of the profits. It might be a hundred dollars. So it's really kind of not bad for those kids who really want to drive too, or just go ahead and do a hundred dollars more to be private.
And we are told what we can charge based on the D O E study. So we have to do a, um Dr. Bassett does a a form each year and does a study and they tell us how much we can charge and how much we have to pay the instructor. So we do not make any funding off of that. That instructor makes all that funding. We just run it through our payroll. If you all have questions afterward, if you can reach out to Dr. Ragnar or your your board member and get those to us, we'll be glad to answer them. And any way you can report that you have. Thank you.
All right. Is there any comments requested from the board at this point?
But I think the main thing, the whole entire process, I think your average person doesn't really realize what it takes to run a school system and just mind um how you all put it all together and do it. I mean, maybe I mean just running it out of that in general.
You know, ones that they make it easier.
Yeah.
First thing, early October, which I think they were just the schedule to was probably the end of the middle I think it were just the schedule to was probably the end of the, the middle of September and then the first, the first public hearing started.
And what, if you, if you, anybody knows the answer to this, or kind of like maybe, help me download it. I know statewide and it's really across the whole entire country. There's a shortage of teachers and it seems to be getting worse. And so it's not just us, we're not the only ones, but what do we try to do, should say, to try salary? Is that what really drives those people to leave these jobs? I don't think so. Are you there? So what do we, what is it that we can do to maybe mitigate some of the excessive laws that we have?
Well, I think dealing with the behavior too and low salary and increasing disruptive. Or awful behaviors.
Is that what drives you? Mostly the disruptive behavior of students? Or is dealing with parents or what?
That's when the kids go.
Yes, but I mean, I don't. Okay, so I highly recommend it. Um, you can reach out to Dr. Rider. Need to walk you around, um, and our classrooms are packed. Um. When you have classrooms that are packed, when we have two, like our teachers, we have some devices and other classrooms. We need the paraprofessionals and we need those ESS employees and they need, they just need help. Um. That many kids, especially in the elementary level, when the teacher is sitting at a table doing a small group with like. Four to six children, but you still have twenty out here. Like they need help managing those, those kids have questions, you can't focus on this small group when you're having to get up or there's disruptive behavior and children are not listening. Um, I mean, that's what I think we're running into and I know, I'll be trying to be personal, but I, I know personally. My younger children are not as smart as my older children, um, because the classroom sizes were smaller back then, there was more. With them, um. And it was a more controlled setting. We have grown so quickly in the last couple of years and with this new development of the nine hundred some home. We know that two kids on average be coming into all of these homes. Like we are planning, as we've discussed together before, but I mean, that's just going to drive teachers out even more. Because they're already maxed out, they already have asked for help. And if we don't have the funding to support the positions that we need to put in the classroom or the materials or the curriculum. Like I think that is also a part of what drives them. And if we can only give three percent and you guys give us an additional two percent on top of that or whatever the case is. Hanover is offering nine percent pay increase to their teachers. We cannot match that.
You got a six hundred and fifty million dollar budget.
So, and I mean, we're just a smaller county and so people still compare us to like New Kent and Hanover and we're not even comparable to that. And that's what really stinks is that like we, we have some parents that come in from Hannovers around the areas, but their kids are still going to school out there or vice versa. And so I think if we can provide those better environments and the support and make sure that we're actually meeting their needs and letting them know that we hear them. I think that that would also help retain them.
It'd be like a fourth grade teacher, but.
Yeah.
I would like, okay, you're talking about nine-year-olds.
Yeah. Well, I mean, my kid hasn't had a chemistry teacher at all. And, and when my kids were in sixth and seventh grade, they never had a science teacher. I mean, we definitely need to do something to.
Doctor, what's your estimate on a new school and what level?
Oh, boy. Um. Well, I, I think, I think that at some point in the near future, it will be a good opportunity for us to talk about. What kind of facility to build that will attract families, but also, um, meet the needs of the community and that, and really now it's all about workforce, workplace readiness. And so on the one hand, I could see, um, a new secondary school, like a new high school. That might have some additional C T E and workforce capacity built in that's more modern than what. But, uh, you, you know, a, a high school is much more expensive than elementary schools to build. Um, I, I shared with a few of our board members the other night, Lancaster is building a new high school and. Their capacity is about seven hundred, so not altogether different from King William. But they're including, um, an auxiliary gym, which is wonderful for athletics and for P E, cause we, you know, we have, we have, we have one gym for six hundred and fifty kids. So their new school will have two gyms for seven hundred kids. They're gonna have a six hundred seat auditorium, a performing arts center that's attached to that school. And, and then of course it's gonna be state of the art. And that'll be about eighty or ninety million is that estimate, so that is no small piece of change. Um. But, you know, people typically, in, in my experience, families typically don't move into a community because of first grade. They might move into a community because of what is on the tail end, you know, the fact that, that we're gonna lead up to. To this endpoint where all the kids in the community. And I think that's, that, that's worth a closer look for the community in my view.
I wonder what Westmoreland's size school. That's my, my.
It's a nice school too. Yeah.
I think for us, uh, it's, you know, just going great and depending on, it's really great from high school and draw more people. Like can the county really support more people moving in, you know?
You know, we already have more people.
No, I know, but if, if our high school is like even better, it's gonna be even better. Not that they only want it, but like do.
Yeah, but we, we missed a little bit of development, but it wasn't a tremendous. Uh, we just had a big break zone at some point.
Yeah. You had asked about recruitment and, and I'm keeping my eye on the time here, um. There just aren't many college students entering education. So when Ms. Rudd goes on her recruitment business, she might need one math. And there might be fifty school divisions looking for that and she might be.
Right.
You know, it's just, it's a real struggle now. It's just there are fewer people going into education and the, you know, the, the climate around public education has not necessarily been the most favorable in the last ten years. Um. And, you know, I understand that too, so if we can as a community create a climate where people want to come, that it's not as much about. That if we're reasonably ahead, reasonably competitive, my view would be if we can stay in the top third of school division. That we can be reasonably, reasonably competitive if we also invest in the support that teachers need and. In-class support, training support, um, because if there are fewer people going into education. Development programs at college, that means that they're gonna be career switchers that are gonna need that shoulder support. Uh, you know, every day at school, they're gonna need the behavior support for, for kids, they're gonna need. Uh, school, families and kids will need school counseling, just a different, it's just different than it was, you know? The, the, the kids that come to school ready to learn are the easiest to teach. But fewer kids are coming to school ready to learn. And it's just, it's just, it's difficult, not impossible, but, um, but we can't do it tomorrow the way that we did it ten years ago.
That's it.
I mean, the level of independence that kids have, the access, the information, the misinformation that shapes the way they think and how they view themselves and the world and all of that, everything shows us.
How is the, um, restriction of cell phones going?
Amazing.
Is it?
So even, um, I will share, I, our student. Um, who comes to the state fair meetings when she provides our report, um, the only feedback we've ever gotten is why can't they use it at lunch? Or in hallways, but other than that, um, all things that mean a positive change when connecting with the.
Cause they're not allowed to have it in the hallway or out, so.
And thanks to our school leaders, they're the ones that have to enforce the teacher.
I think she enjoyed doing.
It's awkward, I mean, there's definitely conversations we all need to start having.
Y'all have coming in? So, um, one three sixty, the six starts to break around the one, um, I think.
There are phases.
Six, six, four something on family and then.
Yeah.
Down home, just bring it up to.
So, I mean, we.
For sixteen hundred.
Family come in which. Two to two and a half children, not counting, um, central garage entry line that's still being developed. That is two thousand two hundred and fifty kids, that is more kids than we had.
Yeah, I mean, fuck me, we hear you, we understand, we know it's common, some of this is board and we. Came on along with Mr. Hodges, we, we knew what happened, um, but Watts been kind of asking questions of our staff here recently, like. Farming capacity, like we gotta look at our tax structure, we need to try to figure out how to raise some commercial. Revenue in and then a lot of people like cringe thought of that, but we can't continue on this path of residential tax base at all. I mean, we've got to get some, some businesses in here to help that kind of succeed and to grow, so, yeah, we're gonna continue to have. Our conversations, figure out how we're gonna fund this, make it possible, I mean, look at, sit down with all of you as well, talk about. Where a good location might be for something, so instead of just looking at a year ahead. Start planning how it's not gonna happen overnight.
So it's not, and it's one of those things that, you know, there's, there's the, the architectural.
Right.
You know, there's a whole, whole bunch of little steps and bases that goes into it that we can.
Big steps, no little steps.
Okay, but I think they're all, I think you can all not. I mean, if in the movie, we get, you know, then start doing our due diligence.
And we're gonna be responsible. Yeah, we're gonna make sure, you know, we're, we're just, you know, we, we, we need, all need to work together to figure out the most responsible.
And I just wanna mention, so in August, I believe we reached out to DOE about feasibility study and so we have completed the initial phase of that study. So we had a lot of legwork from August through what, December, January, we had to reschedule them because of the snow at one point, but they came in and did a. Did the study, we walked all schools, walked every classroom, walked every inch of all four of our schools. At the end of January, we've had a preliminary report. The DOE, the, um, facility study kind of looked at our buildings and they think we have some capacity. You know, a hundred to a hundred and fifty, two hundred and ten at each of our schools. Now keep in mind how we have our current annual structure, it would be a change, right? Cause teachers have full classrooms that they may pull kids into, we may have to restructure or build walls and make some of the classrooms smaller, but. We do have some capacity, so I just wanna make that known, so that it's not like we need one tomorrow, but we can need one, but we wanted to let you know that we. Have taken the approach of trying to work with DOE and our resources to do a study and we're hoping to have that reported in the next few weeks, I believe. Okay, a draft next week that we can kind of be able, once it's finalized, we can share that with, um, the boards and just so that you know that we've been trying to do something on our end. To see what our capacity was, to see what their thoughts are and some of the things that, you know, came out of that is. You know, the pond building was a con, a concern of their, some of our ADA compliance things and there's been some legislation in there about ADA compliance across the building. And we did not add that to our capital plan because. We're not sure what that looks like, I think we put in there for a study in there, but like what that, once we get that study, then we have to comply with what's in that study and so. There's a lot of things that have brought light, but the last time we had this feasibility study was two thousand eleven and we had done a majority of the things. That they had requested except for building auditorium and tear down pond building. I think other than that, we had done a, all the projects that they had like said that we needed to, so I wanted to just. Re- reiterate that from the school side, we are really trying to ensure that we're doing everything we can. I mean, we're sitting currently at twenty-four million dollars in debt over the next thirty years, we know that that's a lot. So like we talk about a new pool of ninety million, that's three times what we're currently holding, so. We, we know that and we have done, I feel like our due diligence to kind of see what our capacity and our availability are, so I don't want. I wanted to bring you up to speed on where we are with that.
All right. Well. I'll let y'all, if y'all have anything left on your agenda, cause the only thing left on mine is the end of this whole thing. I'll let y'all go on your side and.
Moving properly second, all day to say aye, I am two quarters to turn. Thank you very much.
Ruth, that's wearing the same belt.
Check out what I made.
I'm gonna start him off here.